Evening everyone, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is our City of Palat, October 22nd, 2020 City Commission Meeting. At this time, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance and our Invocation. We also have a few of our, we've got most of our staff and department heads are with us via Zoom. This meeting is done according to the Governor's Executive Order, which allows us to have our meetings by way of, by way of any type of video communications outside of what we had before. And so, we're gonna continue this meeting in that manner. So, will everyone please stand for the invocation and the pledge? Mr. Burrow, I ask you to lead us in the pledge, I'll lead us in the invocation. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you right now, thanking you for another opportunity to stand before you and to make decisions. We ask that those decisions be made according to your will, that they be made with thought and courtesy and honor, that all things are pleasing to you. But most of all, we ask tonight, right now, as this country goes through all the things that are before us, that you unify our people, that you unify this community. Lord, we ask a special blessing upon the families that have been affected by violence in this community. And we're right now, we're just asking you to put a hedge of protection around everyone, and also, Lord, to bring peace into this community. We ask you to bring confident ideas and also to bring understanding and empathy to throughout this country. But most of all, Lord, just allow America to come together and live up to its creed. These are the blessings we're asking in the name of our darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, eternal.
Roll call, please. At this time, Commissioner Burrow.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Campbell is with us via Zoom. And also, Terrell Hill, I'm here as well. We, all members are present and accounted for, and we do have a floor. At this time, we're going to move to item two of the agenda, which is approval of minutes. The approval of minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the October 8th meeting?
The second.
Is the most on the floor in the second. During discussion or exceptions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Campbell, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, moving on to item three of the agenda, public recognition and presentations. For the first time, we've got public in here. And so, it's good to see faces again, many of which are masked, and we're all socially distanced, so it's good to have bodies again. So, again, welcome. And so, now, we'll move on to our Student of the Month for October 2020. Vice Mayor Brown, you're with me today. So, before we start our Student of the Month presentation, Vice Mayor, you got any words for the young folks?
Please study.
Please study the words we got today.
Please go to school. Oh, well, get your classes whether you're at home or at school, and be the best that you can be. A saying at my school was, "Good, better, best." Never let it rest until your good is better, and your better is the best. If you keep that in mind, you'll make it.
Did you intentionally skip 3A, the proclamation on World Polio Day?
All right, I missed it, I'm getting old, so I missed it, that's where we are.
3A shows are, yeah, okay, yeah.
We'll go to proclamation on World Polio Day. Appreciate that, City Manager. Okay, I'll read it. And again, we've got Ms. Janet Wagner here. Ms. Wagner, are you present with us?
Yes, I am.
You, so let me read the proclamation, and then I'll give you an opportunity to say a few words, if you'd like.
Well, I would just like to say appreciation on behalf of the Platte Club, Rotary Club of Palatka, that you're acknowledging World Polio Day. We appreciate that, and we'll continue to work hard to eradicate it.
Yes, ma'am, I definitely, and it's gonna be a well-deserved victory, a lot of work. Proclamation reasons follows. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations with over 1.2 million Rotary Club members, comprised of professionals and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service above self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas in 1985, Rotary launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and Bill and Melinda Gates Foundations to immunize the children of the world against polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas today, Rotary has contributed more than $2.1 billion in countless volunteer hours, protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50, $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Whereas the efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary members in more than 35,000 clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, literacy, and environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, here in the City of Palat, Florida, together with the members of the Black City Commission, do hereby proclaim, Wednesday, October 24th, 2020, as World Polio Day, the City of Palatka, and encourage all citizens to join myself, the officials, and staff of the City of Palatka and Rotary International in the fight for polio-free world. And with this, where I appear to set my hand and cost to be affixed to seal the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 22nd day of October, the year of our Lord, 2020. Is that date correct?
22nd, 22nd day of October.
Yeah. I'm in motion.
Set, um, motion approved?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions, call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Wagner. Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and thank Rotaryians throughout this country for the work that they do. Uh, we've got a Rotaryian here, paid by way of City Manager Don Holmes. And so, again, we definitely thank the Rotary, we thank Rotary International for all the work that you do in this community and your commitment to making our community a better place.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
And also Chief Shaw, I think, is a Rotaryian as well. And so, again, thank you very much. Moving on to Student of the Month for October 2020. Here we go, Student of the Month. Brown Pierce Elementary, Harley Andrews, fifth grade. Seal over turf, sixth grade center. JVN Deshaun Williams. I'm guaranteed to butcher three names, so if I do, somebody correct me. Again, JVN Deshaun Williams. E.H. Miller School, Trenton Wiggins. E H Miller School, Trenton Wiggins. James A. Lowen Elementary School, Detron Williams. Jesus Middle School, Cela Mendez. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Keon Johnson. Mellon Elementary School, Samantha Bean. Mosley Elementary School, Christina Lambert. She's in Mrs. Spells class. Palatka High School, Randall Curse. Pennant Baptist Academy, Summer Langston. Butler Academy of Arts and Sciences, Julia Poe. Butler Metis High School, Emery White. That concludes our awardees of student of the month. We also want to make sure that we give a round of applause to our educators for the work that they continually do, even under circumstances surrounding this pandemic. Uh, and again, oftentimes, they never get enough thank yous to go with the efforts that they make to make sure that our young people are accommodated, that they are equipped with positive mentors, and also that they are directed in the proper, in the proper manner. And so again, we want to thank all of our educators uh from all these respective institutions, and let's give them a round of applause. Next group we want to thank are all the parents and friends who tuned in uh from YouTube land onto Zoom so that they can hear everything that's going on and recognize these young people, because it truly takes a village to raise a child. And so we want to thank all of our family members and our parents and our neighbors and everyone who's really invested into these young people for the work that they've done, so let's give them a round of applause as well. And lastly, to our, to our honorees, being student of the month is a wonderful thing, and I always try to get a little bit back of what I learned in third grade in this Greens class over at Mosley. And every day, we started out by saying, I am somebody, and my mind can't conceive it, and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. You guys are somebody great. We're so proud of you. We are excited that even through distance learning and pandemics, you're still taking education seriously, and you're setting the standard for greatness. And so we look forward to you being the leaders of the future, and we are just overwhelmed that our young Palatans are continuing to do the right thing. And so again, we're proud of you, we love you for the city of Palatka, and we look forward to seeing you again as student of the month and also as great citizens here at hometown heroes. Let's give the students a round of applause. Next up is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No acts will be taken on topics of discussion. For those who aren't available to be here in person, you can dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred. Again, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, so that you can be heard during public comment, or you can speak during the YouTube live chat. And so you can click on the YouTube live chat, and you can leave your comments there. And so if there's anyone here for public comment at this time?
Mayor, we have Lori McCarthy here for public comment in person.
Lori McCarthy, you want to come forward? Make sure you're just give your name and address.
Lori McCarthy, two eleven Kirkland Street. At two eleven Kirkland Street, I live in the South District of Parkland. And I'm here today to request a permit and grant for the porch fest this year. This would be the third year for our event. Um, it brings the community together as well as offer opportunities for students to uh join in community service events. And it's also a fundraiser for Feed the Need. We were hoping uh to, is it okay if I remove my mask?
About here, six feet away.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we, I'm also a teacher at Parker High School, and my students were so excited. So many things have been canceled. And as we've all been back at school, they're so eager to get involved in community events, and we were looking forward to this event so that they could get some community service hours. We were also hoping to do a fundraiser for our Panther Closet, which provides clothing to our students in need. Um, and it's also an opportunity for them to um we're doing a Feed the Need, Bring Jelly thing for the community also, and it was gonna give them an opportunity to practice skills such as presenting on the radio. Um, we had a lot of activities involved for JFG, it's Dr. Spur Florida graduates program that I'm involved with. Uh, so they, they were really looking forward to it, and I know the community is also looking forward to it. Uh, we, we've been successfully opening schools, uh attending football games, and opening bars and restaurants again. And this is an outdoor event where it's very easy to social practice, social distancing. I mean, that happens even before COVID. Everybody's outside, nobody's inside, they can't take confined space. So if there's any way we can continue to grow this program for the community, I would really appreciate that. I know um as a community member, I really look forward to it every year. And as a teacher, I, that's over the, I, I've been handling the volunteers from the high school. They really do look forward to having that opportunity to participate in something and give back to the community. So I'm here today to request that we do get a permit this year to go ahead and have the porch fest and the grant that we also have requested for that. And um, I don't know if the camera's on me, but uh here's our poster for the event. And I hope it's a go, because again, we're building it, and we don't want to lose momentum. It grew from the first year to the second year, and we were really hoping to continue that growth. And this is a great way to kind of start reopening the things that we all care about in our community that bring us together. It's an opportunity for a positive experience. So. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I'll just address some of your comments. Where the commission has not said no to anything, we are, right now, we're not accepting any applications for special events. But what we are doing, we've committed to every meeting, taking a look at where we are as a community as it relates to the pandemic. We, we enjoy porch fest and uh, but at the same time, we just want to make sure that everybody's taken care of. You know, you're aware, we, we see where Palatka High School, for example, had to take on a new opponent last week with Hop-on just because of the pandemic and the things that are happening around us. And we just want to make sure that uh if anything, we err on the side of caution so that all our citizens find themselves back. We want nothing more than for there to be an opportunity for everyone to be able to gather safely throughout this country. And uh, we're gonna make sure that we continue to evaluate this um every time possible to get there. So we're not saying that there won't be a porch fest, but it, we may have to push it back a little bit. And uh, at the same time, we can still have the same results. And uh, we just look forward to it and the partnership that it comes from. So, sir, we, if you're gonna come up, you have to come up to the mic and just give your information. Even if it's a general comment, you just gotta give your name and address so we have the record.
Turn your mic on on the left side, on the left side, pull it back toward you.
Just give your name and address.
Alan Mitchell, six sixteen Kirby Street, South District. So um, I just want to be clear because uh, it is coming up quick. And if we are not getting a permit, just tell us, because we don't have a lot of time.
Mr. Russo, when well informed, he became an emergency question the last meeting.
Oh, I'm not.
The, that there are no special events or mention being issued at this time.
Okay.
And that we would continue to review it on a, on a every, on a bi-monthly basis as it relates to the commission meetings. And if there's a change statistically in what's going on with COVID, if there's some change in certain standards that are in place, or even in um the way that the commission determines on what we're opening up, because last meeting, we actually started basing it certain things. So we actually started opening facilities up at fifty percent capacity. So we're moving, we're moving closer, unless there's a continual uptick. We're moving closer to trying to get to some semblance of normal, but we're doing so based upon making sure that we take precautions in place, and we continually have those conversations at every meeting. And so if you're like everybody else in America right now, for those people working at home, for those kids that are staying at home, we're all sitting wait, and as time changes, we all change. So we're all adjusted. It's uncomfortable. Uh, it's not necessarily the greatest thing in the world, but I would rather take a month extra to do porch fest in January than to have someone die in December. And so that's just where I am. And the commission, at the end of the day, is gonna vote on what it is, and they're gonna review it and have a conversation about it every year. So that, that will come again at the next meeting. At this meeting, we'll have a conversation during this meeting as well.
So by the end of the meeting, you would have?
We'll have a
I understand some.
Right, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. There's a comment I saw that came through the chat. For student of the month. You guys have to help me make up. For children greeting, Center Charter School, Kaya Vincent. Kaya, we want to make sure we recognize you, and let's give Kaya a round of applause and we apologize for so again, congra, congratulations, and you get all the special time to yourself right now. So again, we just want to make sure we say thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Do we have any public comment? We don't have anything on the telephone or anything else in the chat? Seeing nothing else, we're gonna go ahead and close all the comments at this time. And we'll move on to item five of the agenda, which is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have items A through G. Are there any items on consent that you wish to have removed at this time? There's no authority, except the consent agenda as written. And then second, is there any further questions?
What?
Questions, call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've got a couple of special people we want to make sure we recognize at this time. Our newest member to the planning board, Caitlin Elaine Owens.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Very excited.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our oldest member on the Palatka Board of Zoning Appeals, who's also my former code of force, the board member, Seliger Kitchens.
I don't know about that oldest part, ma'am. I wanted to talk about that one.
She's a veteran. She retired when I first got on the board. She'd been there thirty-seven years then. Again, thank you. But again, thank you, thank you for serving on the board, and thank you for working for our community.
Thank you.
So moving on to our regular business at this time, we have an appeal of the Historic Preservation Board's case number H P B twenty that's zero four one one four South Third Street, the applicant is in green. At this time. Mr. Memes or? Are you present?
Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, your counsel.
Okay, I just want to give a brief overview to the commission before we started the appeal hearing, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the Historic Preservation Board conducted a hearing concerning Mr. um Green's application for a certificate of appropriateness concerning his property located at one one four South Third Street, which is the old Elks Building, which included a request to construct an eight-foot fence along the Oak Street frontage of the property. This request solely was denied by the Historic Board. The Historic Board, Preservation Board ruled that the property owners could construct a fence along the Oak Street frontage with a maximum of height of five feet. Um, city of Palatka Municipal Code, section fifty-four seventy-four, provides for appeal to the city commission for, to the city commission from the Historic Preservation Board's denials of certificate of appropriateness. And Mr. Green timely filed an appeal of this decision to the city manager. So that's why we're here this evening for this appeal. Um, Mr. Memes will present the recommendation of the staff to the Historic Preservation Board and will give um you their decision. And Mr. Green is here to present his side. Um, I asked that both of them would be sworn in. And I also ask that Mr. Memes and Mr. Green limit their presentation to this single issue of maximum height of the eight-foot fence along the Oak Street frontage.
Well, well, all party speaking today, will you please stand ready right hand? We're front and test, only you're about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and less than the truth. You may proceed at this time. Mr. Memes.
Yes, my name is Dean Memes, I'm the inter-party representative of the city of Palatka. And I wrote the staff report. As the city attorney stated, you're, you're really talking about one of the issues here. There is requests from the applicant, and they were all recommended for approval by staff in the Historic Preservation Board with one modification to, to one of the requests. The very attractive eight-foot fence going around the property and the, the recommendation from staff was to not have that be eight feet where it is facing public right along South Third Street. Based on good urbanism, basic principles of walkability, got a downtown block away. Eight feet is generally considered a barrier, six feet is considered a privacy fence. Four feet is very typical, or even less, neat walls are even less, but staff was aware of the recognition of the applicant's concerns and strong wishes for this, recommended five feet. And um, that is a reasonable recommendation in order with the purview of the board and in accordance with the Secretary of Interior's guidelines regarding Historic Reservation Districts. The city does not have specific fence height guidelines, requirements for commercial districts. And that is true, that we probably wouldn't be here tonight if, if the city did have that in its code. We do have it for certain districts, in one district for certain uses, swimming pools for safety. And typically, in residential, most of the historic districts are residential properties. And even those that are not, there was a, there was a recent case really across the street on Third Street in October first, where the applicant went with the, you know, proposed, no, no, this was the application, they, they went with a very typical historic fence, blackmail, four feet high. So the issue before us is really the height. And the issue is, is this property. So staff feels comfortable in professional recommendation uh to the board and the board can modify it ever so slightly. I will, I will read the staff recommendation to the board. We'll bring out the privacy fences, this is the review, are typically five feet, this is in your package as well, it's in the slide. And we're typically six feet in height rather than eight feet, in common standard, not only in Palatka, it's non-privacy. Four, five feet. Provided a defined boundary, but in a conscious visual area. So these areas along street frontages do not support walkability in some of the city, particularly in a traditional downtown area, pedestrians would definitely not be trying to do. So therefore, staff recommended a change, we would like to maximum five feet just for that section, just that section, parallel to the public right. Set back about ten or eleven feet. And with a transition from the eight-foot hole, sort of perpendicular to the property line, and um to that could be in steps, could be just a gradual, slowly.
So the, the, the existing walls are, that are on the property or on the, or continue, or they're on the property land at eight feet high?
Well, they, they aren't there. Actually, posts were put in at higher than eight feet, and that got the, that sort of got the attention of staff, sort of took a visit out there. So the only thing, no, these are, these are proposed walls.
Based on the, on the, on the, the U shape wall, basically being proposed in the diagram.
It's, it's, they're perpendicular lines, yeah, you see the, the.
The P lines that are.
Probably, the part of the property goes to Oak Street. That's, that's really what's at issue and only the part parallel to the Oak Street frontage.
But you're okay with an eight-foot fence in all the other areas except on the Oak Street front?
Yeah, and even, and even where one is installed on the, on the Third Street frontage. That's, that's there, that was not, staff recommended approval of that. That was a right on the property line, it's another, another problem.
And that's an eight-foot as well?
It is eight feet.
So, so wouldn't we like uniformity if we reduce it in one section of the profile?
Well, we're, we're dealing with the fact that it was done. There was work done prior to contacting historic preservation staff or, or building, or building permitting.
And so there's a. Recent walkability, what do you want?
Um, I mean. Traditional downtown, a healthy downtown, really, you look for mixed uses. If you wanna attract people to walk downtown, I would intend by product of walkability. But this might walk in four feet, in five feet, is, is not a visual or psychological. Well, it's psychological, you're not gonna cross the property, but that's interesting. You can see what's going on there. It could be very good for this.
But that's based on, is there a lot of?
No, not based on.
What's the setback on this one?
That's setback, I believe, about twelve or thirteen, no, ten or eleven feet from the driveway. Thank you. And, and so. And so that was the recommendation of staff, we thought was appropriate, preservation, historic preservation board, very similar, in all intents and purposes, similar.
The board, the board and staff, I think, issues with the materials, the range or the dividers, so they're all appropriate.
It's just essential design just for that one section.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that's, I, I think I've covered the points, I don't want to delay.
Any questions from the commission?
Oh, I just wanted to see it up on the, yeah, I wanted to see, yeah, I'm looking through the packet here.
You think you can possibly find that page in there that has the, it has a, there's a page in that has the fence itself?
Like to see the eight feet, the eight feet fence and then what's in the front?
Yeah, you, you can come up with this.
Yeah, I'm, I, I saw something in here, but I wanna make sure I'm confirming what I'm seeing.
It's on page four.
So, yeah.
Is that the side there?
That's the side.
That's actually not there. That is superimposed. I took an image. So what exists in the top frame is what is actually there.
But that's what you're requesting.
Right, without showing lands, this is just, I'll give you the dimensions of the fence. You won't be able to see the fence once it's.
That's straight position, right foot.
So that's eight feet.
Give your name and address. Give your name and address for the record first.
Timothy Green, the Rock. Okay, about one fourteen south. The fence actually only measures seven foot six inches, the actual top order. And generally, you lay the boards, the posts taller so that they can cut them flush. So you all lay to give the highest positive levels. Alright, so let me just, if I, if I can, I have a brief introduction.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak at my field. Uh, my name is Tim Green, I'm the owner of the one forty three South Third Street property in Elks Park. As we gather today, many of you may be wondering why I'm applying an approved COA application. Of course, most of my projects require just one, three-foot reduction in one side, one side, transitional size. Uh, on the surface, it may seem to be inflexible or just blocking the system, but I share that's for the state of the truth. I've been working in this since May was here and we just simply don't see eye to eye. Uh, the short answer is that the HPB's required three-foot reduction on the Oak Street side for rent of the project and in fact, it's intended business, this is a private property. And there's no lawful or logical reason for the reduction. The old house law is a non-contributable structure in the historic district, it's not historic. And therefore, it is not fall under the guidelines of the Secretary of Transit and Rebootation, which only deals with historical structures, not historical districts. Nevertheless, I made considerable efforts to design a pattern for the surrounding community as well as function. With respect to the height, the commercial fence is only two feet tall, two feet tall than a standard R C. So more importantly, I preemptively, involuntarily took steps to mitigate any adverse effects of the fence on the community genuine or perceived. Uh, while there was no requirement to do so, we just discussed, this is a deadline line. I sent the fence back eleven point five feet back from the side. Now, if you've been to the South Historic District, most of the buildings, let alone the fences, are within, right on the lot line, or within a few feet of the lot. So as far as a visual barrier fence is significant from the back. I further mitigated the issue by landscaping the area. Section, we lost this line, the section in front of that fence, the fence only runs twenty-three feet on Oak Street. So twelve-foot by twenty-three-foot section, but that's fully landscaped. Yes. So this, yes, so all of the section here will be fully landscaped. So what the fence is, five feet or eight feet, you're not gonna see it because I'll put in native species, flowering plants, vineyards on the fence. And you've got eleven and a half feet of depth on the side, simply irrelevant in terms of that.
So we won't see the fence. We won't, we won't you do the landscape?
Once it's landscaped, we won't see the fence.
And we'll, we'll discuss with Mr. Mims in.
Yes, since, since May. So as you can see, I've incorporated a lot of compromise and conditions into my plan from the very start. So why does Mr. Mims feel the fence needs to be five feet tall? Well, the staff report answers, um, the structure of the wall applies with the architectural historical powers of the community. He feels that an eight-foot fence is excessive, a visual barrier, injures to the general, the character of the district, or the guidance and ordinance, and then affects walkability. So the solution of reducing an eight-foot fence to a five-foot fence, where you can't see it, it's not a real solution if that was the real issue. So simply put, it just seems that Mr. Mims had an adressee of open fences in downtown historic districts. That's his opinion, but that's not the law. So, uh, because the fence on a building in zoning code is permissible, I feel Mr. Mims is trying to bend and expand the authorities of the Historic Preservation Board to include how is regular fence hobby despite having nothing to do with historic preservation. What does that have to do with historic preservation? So let me say this clearly as possible. Mr. Mims has persuaded the Historic Preservation Board to issue a decision to reduce my fence for reasons other than historic preservation. So I think this is done correctly. And I think it's ignoring four important points. I think it ignores the purpose of architecture through the scope, which is limits the HPB from exercising any control over the zoning, including fence lighting, unless it specifically has to do with historic preservation. Sure. Can I grab my one?
Yes, sir. Everybody up.
You put the business in that building?
So.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
And that aids.
Yeah. Are you still on?
Thinking.
Is the other, the other, you still on though?
Yeah, you're still on.
Don't, or just take me off. Yeah, let's, let's take a five-minute break. We're having, we're having our, our, our first real technical difficulty series. And you should have came and saved us.
Well, um, we got, we got. Let me get that suit.
What is the meeting ID?
You get it.
I like that one. I like that one.
Thank you for being patient with our technical difficulty. So, we'll go ahead on service break, you can continue at this time.
Thank you. Uh, let me recap. So, uh, what I feel has happened is that the, the decision by the HBV was reached in error based on four points. The first being that Article Three, which sets statutes for all of historic district board's actions, says specifically that they make a decision on COA applications, that, that they have no control over matters of zoning unless they deal specifically with historic preservation related matters. Secondly, ignoring a very important issue that actually came up in the map that Mr. Mims showed during his presentation, that the property actually had a building in the very spot that the fence is going, which would have been significantly taller than eight feet and never historically posed any visual barrier or effect to walkability. I have to show that in the exhibits. Uh, third, that his opinions regarding fences and their impact on town is, is, it's not law. He has had code and ordinances and if you feel fences are not appropriate at eight feet, you can change the code or ordinances. And finally, this hypothetical scenario, inflating residential and commercial properties, mismatching front yard standards and side yard standards of what fences is, is, is just that. It's hypothetical, has nothing to do with the property we're discussing, so. And it's hard to discuss. So, so today, I wish you were ready to say. And I want to also point out, referencing back again, that it was not my lack of willingness to reach a compromise with the historic preservation. Uh, if you attended the August twenty-fifth meeting, we were reaching a compromise. Mr. Larry Beaton proposed some changes and I was agreeable to them. In fact, he got a second by Ms. Laura Fohnberg. And in extraordinary action, Mr. Mims intervened and had the motion with an arm because it didn't suit his needs. And so the end result was there was no compromise. Mr. Mims got his way and the HBV had no decision but to decide against my defense. I was open to compromise. The members of the HBV, some of them appeared to be open to compromise. It was just only one person who was not, that was Mr. Mims. And so, I do have some exhibits to show you. And, uh, you want to ask some questions?
This is the only, this is the only section that you were dealing with the eight foot and they wanted that to be, wanted it to be five in the front direction.
Well, if, if you don't mind Commissioner, if I have in my packet that I handed out, you have my exhibits. If you want to flip to that portion of it, I think the best way to look is at the fence boundary. So if we can go to exhibit B one. And, um, you can, I will look at my, the, the second image, which is from these applications. That's boundary map, which shows Oak Street and Third Street. You can grab a small.
The previous page, the previous, the previous slide.
You said D one or B one?
D is in David.
Third Street, no.
I think this is my packet right here.
Right there? Oh, okay.
If you go to.
Oh, okay, I'm looking in the, I'm looking in our, okay, in the agenda, okay.
He just.
He just played.
Yeah, okay, got it.
So, um, just to give you, let's just start at the top. I know that your question deals with the technical difficulties. But the first portion came with a staff report. Uh, Mr. Mims provided nineteen thirty Sam's form map. It shows what historically was on the property in July nineteen thirty. And as small as it is, uh, what we're looking at here is this pink building is the main portion of the Oak's lot. And then this is Oak Street. So this corner lot is the multi-family rental unit. This orange building is no longer there, that's my lot. And this pink building is the adjacent building, which is charitable clothing outlet. The second image is the fence boundary. And again, that the red line distinguishes the boundaries of the fence in question. So if you look at Oak Street, you see, uh, the gray sidewalk, the green lot, that's the twelve, roughly twelve foot by twenty-three foot area that will be landscaped and the red line is this element you were looking at in terms of my proposed eight foot fence. And then the final comparison map shows the boundaries of what would have been the front porch of a building. I'm sure it was at least one story building taller than eight feet tall that falls identical to the fence line. I'd say it's, it's off by a few feet and probably the porch attachment to it probably messed it up. And if you just look quickly at D two and D three, I took photos to show that the foundation of that house still remains parallel about three feet or three and a half feet parallel to the front of the fence. So, this notion that the fence is some sort of visual barrier that is inappropriate for the historical district when there was a building there that would have been a greater visual barrier, to me, doesn't make any bit of sense. Never mind what I've done to accommodate, mediated the, the effect.
There's something, the picture you're talking about is, is that one?
Yes. All right, so, did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Was there any other question regarding the fence? I just wanted to try and go. All right, so just to go as quickly as we can, not to delay the matter. Exhibit A is just simply the ten points of the Secretary of Interior Standards Rehabilitation. And I'm not going to read it to you, I would just say that if you read the wording in there, they talk specifically about historical properties. And by Mr. Mims' own account, staff report, my own research, the building is non-contributing. Does not mean it doesn't have any history behind it. It means that it does not contribute to the general history and culture of that district. So it doesn't have the requirements to adhere to every specification that the Secretary of Interior would want you to do. But in terms of fixing it, it has to look nice and appropriate for the area, which is no concession. Mr. Mims says that's the case, fence looks nice. Exhibit B speaks about the duties of the Historic Preservation Board. I ask you to look at specifically number three. It talks about what the Historic Preservation Board is supposed to do in the event that existing codes don't match up with their goals. And what they're supposed to do is participate in the adaptation of existing codes, ordinances, procedures, and programs. That doesn't mean that they take it out on applicants for the COAs when the code doesn't meet with the standards that they want to have for it. So they do not create the rules. It's basically a day-to-day device, departments that create rules for code and part of action. C?
Look, don't they have a book called the Green Book that tells, that has guidelines as to what goes in those historic districts? There's a book that, uh, I thought that the, um, that we have to go by to make sure that it stays historical. When they first started laying out these historical districts years ago, uh, they had, they had a, and it came up about, uh, somebody wanting to replace the fence and they wanted to use plastic instead of the picket wood fence. And, um, I was trying to think, Elekka left out of here.
That, you're, you're bringing up a very good point that I actually touch on later. I don't know your reference to the Green Book. What I can say is the standard is laid out and you're probably, it's one and the same, the standards set by the Secretary of Interior. They may have had a, like a layman's name for that.
Well, I think that they called it that because they told them what kind of windows and. Elekka, do you remember?
Yes, ma'am.
We did, uh, well, you, you were on the board then, weren't you?
No, I wasn't on the board.
No, before, before you?
There's a Green Book, but it's not really green, they just called it that.
Yeah, but don't they tell you what can, what can go in there? Because we had this discussion on fence.
Is it guideline or is it policy?
I believe it's guideline.
Guideline. I think it came, it came out of Tallahassee.
All right, let's, let's, let's do this for the purposes of not being here all night. Let's stick to the, stick to this group and we'll get on the Green Book later.
Okay, um, if we could, uh, exhibit C, this is really the most important exhibit as far as my argument from a legal standpoint. This, this lays out exactly what the Historic Preservation Board can make a decision based upon. Okay, it's, it's this or not?
We have it now, thank you.
I'm sorry?
We already have it, not quite.
Great, so, um, and, and I'm going to read it. "The decision to issue a notice of disturbance shall be based on the conformance of proposed works and the Secretary of Interior stands to rehabilitation." I, I, I simply fail to see how, uh, the fence height relates to the Secretary of Interior's standards, given that the building A is not contributing and even in terms of being in a historic district, how fence height determines whether or not something is more historic or less historic. You know, the implication of that really does not connect. And then finally, the bottom, the last line of that one paragraph, "The board shall not exercise any control." Shall meaning can't. And, uh, "over land use such as governed by zoning ordinances over construction such as governed by the building code." And then this is the caveat that I believe Mr. Mims used, "Unless control is within the intent and scope of the article." So in his decision to deny me my eight foot fence, he says that the adverse effect under Section B, one, two, and three would affect or injure us to the general visual character of the scene. That this affects walkability, aside from the merits being weak, that really is not what they mean when they say injure us to the general visual character of the package. Someone might not like a tall fence as they like a short fence. That is not what they mean by that. What they mean is exactly what you were talking about, but I'll put it into this context. If Oak Street had all picket, white picket fences up and down the street and I proposed a fence that was a vinyl red plank fence instead of that, it may, well, we'll take out the bar. It may comply entirely with the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. It might be historically the correct building, but it would disrupt the general visual character of the neighborhood. That's what we're talking about. Now, I've included photos of the fences that you can see on Oak Street, including exhibit E two, which is across the street. It's a six foot chain link fence with about a foot and a half of barbed wire with mines growing all over it. I don't think I'm disrupting any general character, especially than that. I have views up and down Oak Street, including the Tag Agency, which is practically my neighbor. Part filled with cars, I don't think my fence disrupts the general visual character of that. And then if you go to exhibit three, you can see the various other types of fences in Oak Street, going from fourth to third. In the Baptist Church, there has a six foot fence that just abruptly ends on a lockway. Two picket fences that have no transition to the six foot fence. Like four foot chain link that transition directly or don't transition, but go to the six foot covered with weeds and plants and so forth. I will agree that this is not an eight foot fence there, but there's a business reason why I chose the eight foot fence. Clearly laid out to Mr. Mims. And this is the proposal to avoid having to use something like barbed wire, which is ugly, which is really damaging to the general visual character of the neighborhood.
What's, what's your business reason?
So the interior of that area is to be used for outdoor seating. And I spoke with both my property, neighboring property owners. And, uh, the residential property owners are in agreement with using the eight foot fence. It gives them substantial privacy in the area for their tenants to use if they have an outdoor seating restaurant style up until nine in the evening, ten in the evening, or a special event or something. And then, uh, because there's a grade to the ground, I plan to put, uh, platform decking or something which will elevate the inside. So the, while the exterior may be at eight feet, the interior privacy may only be six feet because of the grade to the ground and the elevation of the deck. If I went with the five foot fence, it means potentially that people who are eating on the deck only have four feet of privacy or less, which is no privacy at all. Now, whether or not they want to look out onto the street, if the street was visually interesting or better improved, I would be happy to lower the fence. But at this point in time, where the property, the surrounding properties are not developed, overgrown, not kept, I would rather keep the privacy and have potential clientele, customers enjoying their privacy, having a nice meal in an outdoor setting, which is badly needed in this town.
You also indicated to keep landscape the area in front of it?
It will entirely landscape. So, uh, I've, I've already, people have seen, this is not part of the presentation because this is not disputed. They've seen the third street view, which is the front side of my building. The landscaping, not to pat myself on the back, looks fantastic. Anyone will attest to that, I think, even if it's.
No.
Anything to add, Neil? Um, I, I really don't want to go through every example, but I do want to point out that I included, including views of downtown Gainesville that show that they have in downtown walkable areas, this would be E five, fences that are taller than eight feet in restaurants used for outdoor seating. And, uh, right on University Boulevard. E four is, I spent just a half an hour, I could have filled a hundred photos of walls, fences, and hedges, all six, seven, eight feet or more in walkable areas of the historic commercial areas. So again, this notion that my fence is somehow, uh, set back eleven point five feet from the sidewalk, hidden by landscaping is going to affect adversely the general aesthetic of the neighborhood is, is just not, is just not. And that's it.
Any other questions from the commission?
I was asking about what was going to be there in each restaurant, right?
Right, so, um, early on before this pandemic really took grip, I reached out to a specialist in restaurant, real estate in St. Augustine and discussed some ideas. My wife and I are not restaurateurs, but given the circumstances, one of our ideas is actually offer the restaurant rent free for a year to potentially, uh, a notable, uh, respected chef who can really draw our clientele to the town. So, um, aside from probably about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of renovation, we have a plan for the building. We won't forego a year's worth of rent just to get some good business in the town. And it will actually lean towards hopefully, uh, someone who brings in, uh, cultural food, not, you know, not just, uh, plain Jane, uh, you know, not that I don't like Cracker Barrel, but, you know, something a little bit better than that.
Don't worry, we travel, we eat out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Josh, you have anything else?
Oh, I would like to say you, uh, a definite promise that you will landscape it properly.
Absolutely.
Okay, if you don't, we're going to park out there and keep it on all night.
Can we cut it back down to five feet? You're going to put your landscape down?
It's been part of the proposal.
All right, well, we appreciate it. Well, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the eight foot, uh, fencing for the restaurant provider that he, he does, uh, put the landscaping in that he, uh, put before the commission today.
Second.
Did you put the, was the landscaping plan presented to the, to the board previously?
There is a, there's a notation, the original application says that in front of that everybody landscapes. I didn't use specification to what because actually Mr. Mims advised that I didn't.
That conforms, that conforms.
Maybe, uh, I would suggest your, if you said landscape, consistent with what he approved, he has a proper order.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, um.
Can we add, can, well, we can't do that. Can we add to that based on, based on the standards? We can add that to it. You got something else from the council, from Service Hall?
I, I just wanted to inquire about whether the chair intended to see if there's any members of the public who wanted to speak on this particular issue.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? You can dial it, you can use the YouTube chat, or you can dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred. If you're in the room, please come forward at this time and provide us with your comments. Seeing no public comment, seeing the phone not ring, is there anything on the chat?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Okay.
Oh, I want to make my motion. Oh, making a motion again?
No, I hear you. Just make it again so we have a clearer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, eight foot fence with the, except, I mean, with, um, the caveat that he's going to put the landscaping in, that's, you know, at least to the point that where he can, you, the, the, the fence is, even with the fence or higher, um, as my motion.
And that's the eight foot fence consistent with the image that we saw today?
Consistent with the character of what we seen today. Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, we have in the planning department that there is landscaping, um, standards. So if it could be in, um, compliance with the standards of the city's landscaping criteria?
I say with the nature, the, um, the character of nature.
Just say the landscaping standards.
Your motion was to include landscaping, that it's consistent with our landscaping standards.
Landscape is to be consistent with the landscaping standards.
Okay, uh.
Thank you.
There's a second by Commissioner McCaskill, was it?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. This is Ms. Robinson.
You have a comment? You know, we've got a late comment, Ms. Robinson?
Yes, sir, it just came in. It's on, on line one.
They're, they're dialing, I closed it, but we're going to take it. I'll log her up.
Oh, okay, very good. Um, is this Don?
This is Terrell Hill, can you give your name and address?
You're. Uh, I mean, Mayor Hill, this is Bob Taylor, seven ten St. John's Avenue. I wanted to speak with reference to the issue being discussed at the commission meeting. All right, um, I wanted to speak in support of the recommendation of the planning staff and, um, had some comments relative to the facility itself. Uh, you might know that a few years ago, the district was rezoned to downtown Riverfront, but it traditionally was a residential zoning. So, most of the residences that are on the south side of Oak Street have virtually no fences on that street and a high fence at that location will impact the light area vision of the residents in that area. I think a lower fence would be more in keeping with the general character of the neighborhood. And, um, I think that at five foot or so height is reasonable. The owner of the Elks building is contending that there's a significant float to the property that would mandate a higher fence. I've been by there, I don't see it. Uh, I think that this would disrupt the general character of the neighborhood. I'm not in favor of supporting, uh, a motion that would allow that eight foot fence. One last comment, residential neighborhoods have a limit to what they would do. And again, when this was rezoned as downtown Riverfront, uh, it didn't take into consideration what was already there.
Anything else from you, Mr. Taylor?
We should reconsider the motion.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We've got a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion by the commissioner at this time?
Question.
Of course it's called, all the favors they are. Oppose, most carries unanimously.
We, we did this because we want to see businesses downtown, restaurants and stuff.
All right, certainly appreciate it. Thanks for all your due diligence, sir. And thanks for your investing in our downtown community.
Thank you, staff, for working on this as well. I think the other thing for us is that we want to make sure that in this community, that we build a roadblock for new businesses. And in this community, we don't want to give away the baby with the bathwater, but we want to make sure that we continue to find solutions to problems as opposed to creating additional problems. And so I'm glad that we were able to find a resolution to this issue that we can offer new business owner in here. And we can look forward to building that remaining empty for a while and have had a couple of businesses come in and out of there since the Elks left. But a building that was empty actually becoming vibrant in this community, and that's one of the things that we're looking for. And we just thank the Greens for taking that opportunity to kind of collect up, start it. Again, thanks to the commission for the consideration, thanks to staff and council for the work that they've done on this as well. Moving the agenda. Direction from the commission regarding reopening issuance of special events permits. Mr. Holmes, uh, we, we're going to go, this is our revisiting of this event. We've got it on our calendar, on a professional calendar until such time as we decide to issue special events permits. This is an opportunity for the commission to have a discussion as it relates to anything that's in place. I will tell the commission that recreation had a soccer, their first distance soccer event for, for younger kids. And it went well, it went well last weekend, and they limited the number of kids that were involved, but they had decent participation and they made sure they set their, they set their stuff up so that they could at least start to work towards doing some additional things so that our kids don't find themselves continually stuck inside. And so they had good participation with that, had roughly fourteen out, and they were able to, to work with the kids and they kind of continued mastering. Any comments or any additional considerations from the commission at this time?
Yeah, I think we, I don't know, I mean, I think we should be, nothing significant changed. I mean, I know we had, I believe we had two more deaths since the last meeting.
We had.
And, right, and we still are seeing new cases coming in. We can't control that event in terms of the number of people from a special event standpoint. And so I think with us opening in phases gradually, what we're doing with the, with the recreation sports and spec, um, not special event, but facility rentals, we can pretty much control those environments. So I want to, from my opinion, I just stay, stay with what we currently have based on, we get, still getting deaths, we're still getting other things, and we got other facilities closing, like the Atlanta, Atlanta Falcons, they, they were closed this, uh, this past weekend with their football game.
I think they're glad they closed.
So yeah, so it's just a number of different things. So I'm staying, I want to stay with this, what we constantly have, we constantly monitor the situation and see if we get better or not.
Commissioner, Commissioner McCaskill?
Commissioner Ball, um, in that aspect, and we're visiting, revisiting this every two weeks, and we also agreed that we have to take an emergency out, and we will. So I have to agree that we move forward, keep on selling the same records we're on.
Vice Mayor, Commissioner Campbell, anything?
Well, life is important to me, and, and I want to make sure that we have every opportunity to take care of those people, even if some of them don't want to take care of themselves.
Right.
And, and they said that we don't know if there's going to be another, what is it?
Another wave?
Wave, another wave coming to those.
Thirty-six states, that I would have to take at this point. Anything, Mr. Campbell?
I'm in total agreement with what's already stated by everyone else.
Is there a motion by anyone to remain status quo?
I'll make the motion that remains status quo.
Second? Motion on the floor. The second, is there any further discussion on the motion? Questions called, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on. To item number eight, adopt resolution twenty twenty R nine seven, authorizing the development of a new public works facility. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor.
Just once.
Just one second.
I'll read the caption at this time. A resolution of the city, commission of the city of Black, authorizing the development of a new public works complex.
Mr. Griffith, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we've been talking about this for some time. In your packets, there is a detailed summary of the design criteria or building program of what we're proposing to construct. We have gone through a number of sites, and at this time, we are proposing a parcel of city-owned land at the intersection of PRC Way and the old airport runway that's been abandoned off of Klarke and Drive. The parcel that we're looking at is in excess of eight acres, which would be double what we're currently using. We are proposing a twenty-two thousand square foot building that is about four thousand heated and cooled, with the balance being warehouse and garage space. For context, we currently have a little over eleven thousand total square foot at ten ten Ocean Street and about two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet heated and cooled. I think you're all very familiar with our existing facilities. We do have a debt service payment budgeted this year. I would like to point out to you that the estimates that have been developed based upon this building program range anywhere from two point four million to three point eight. Unfortunately, we have only budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand, and with the help of Ms. Becker, that basically translates to, actually, Ms. Becker, I don't have that number in front of me. Do you recall what that one hundred and thirty translated to, to four point two, or four point two percent at twenty-five years?
Yes, that was two million, and that was based upon an earlier estimate with, you know, something different. However, that is at twenty-five years.
Okay. I will also point out that we're not too concerned about making a decision on if the debt service payment is adequate or not yet. All we're asking for tonight is approval to move forward with three items. The first is requesting the Federal Aviation Administration release of the property. I will also state that the property was already identified for release in the airport master plan, so this is consistent with your existing plan for the airport. The second item is to pursue financing for the construction of the public works facility, and we already do have someone under contract for that. And then the third is to go ahead and advertise a design build solicitation. Ultimately, we would come back to the commission with the financing terms and a contract for the design and construction of the facility. Are there any questions?
I guess the biggest question I have is looking at the number on the, on the proposal. I know we've had multiple discussions about, about facility itself and about the use of metal, using, using a metal building as opposed to traditional construction. So, you know, brick and mortar. So I, I guess when we run the numbers, the numbers that we've discussed previously as it relates to, I think buildings of similar size, we find ourselves in a, I guess in a different range. Do you think this, do you think this project can be done? At, so besides the twenty-two thousand square foot buildings, or something else? I know we better have the washout facilities, all the other things, your, your landscaping, your site development, all those things in place. What drives our cost up above the one five that we talked about previously?
So there are two items that really drive the cost up. One is site development costs, which could be scaled. The second is just the size of the structure. You know, we're looking at doubling the amount of warehouse and garage space that we have. My opinion on this would be that we need to move towards the design build solicitation to see what opportunities we may have in regards to the method of construction, the finishes, and/or do we phase some of the building development? Can we get by with five thousand less square foot warehouse now and add it on in ten years when it's needed? Does that answer your question, Mayor?
So any other questions from the commission at this time?
No, I'm happy to see that we found a piece of property that will be away from the residential sections of town that when the trucks go in to do what they, and the folks go in to do what they need to do. And I would like to see it move forward in getting, in getting it done because they do need a, a new facility. We do need a new facility.
And this was, and this was, uh, we, we approved, well, we, I guess we approved a one point five to at least go and explore one point five, but this is two point four?
Well, the one point five was for an existing property. Um, that was, that had, we had a, we had a disposs, and so, and I remember you making a motion on that.
Yeah.
But that one five was to look at that existing property, it was listed at that number, and so we were looking at an opportunity to bid on it, but it still had some upgrades that needed to be done as well. And so I, I think what this does a bit differently, and I can truly say that over the course of the years, we've talked about creating the quality of life, work quality for our, our employees, but also, just as Vice Mayor said, getting out of the, getting out of the residential community where we once had the city dump and some other things, having public works at the end of Tim Street and Eleven Street. I, I think this is an opportunity for us to be able to have all the necessary tools in place, to have connectivity along with getting rid of old issues and any other thing that's out there, and having a hodgepodge of facilities in place. But it also, I think more than anything else, it then requires to take any property off the tax roll.
Right.
It puts us in a position so that we can start to advance the community and fulfill the promises that we made to our employees as far as making sure that we provide them with adequate working opportunities so that they can maximize efficiencies. And I think that in having this, it, it brings new life to equipment, to, and it's going to be savings, although we're spending, we would spend roughly two million, let's use that as a number, we would, we would find ourselves in a situation where now the advances in technology, the advances in facilities, that would, they would all change and they would all benefit us as a, as a whole. So I think definitely the time is, is far spent, and I appreciate Mr. Griffith giving this on the agenda so that we can start to pull the trigger on this. So that's just my thought. Under Commissioner McCaskill, you have something before?
I didn't.
I'd like to see us move forward with it. I think it's, it's past time for it, and, because that facility, we've been talking about for a while, and we won't have to buy property. We were wise enough to find something that won't come off the tax roll, and I think we need to, I make the motion that we let them look into it and.
Right, absolutely. I mean, I'm, I'm all for them looking into it. I mean, can we, you said we could phase, can we phase it in, and can, is there a possibility that other, can we like consolidate some other departments, maybe looking to see if anybody else can go into that facility?
So that we can be clear.
Okay.
She's already, she, Vice Mayor made a motion, and I want to clarify, your, your motion is to, is your motion to accept staff recommendation?
Yeah.
Is there a specific funding level that you're looking to accept the recommendation at?
Well, I hadn't thought about the, I, it, the need is so great. I think once we start looking to it, they'll bring back, unless one of you all want to meet.
Staff recommendation was three tier. You've got, there are three things that have to be done, and so Mr. Griffith, so you can state those three things so that.
One is.
Vice Mayor understands what the three items are that you requested your authorization. State your, state your three problems that you need, your authorization for your property, the airport authorities release it.
Pursue, pursue financing.
Yes, sir. So everything is included in the resolution. It gives us operation, authorization to move forward with the release of the property, uh, property from the airfield, as well as seeking financing proposals. We wouldn't be entering into any agreement that would come back to you, as well as advertising the design build solicitation. If what I'm hearing from you is you would like us to, when we prepare this design build solicitation, take into account a phased approach and write it into the design criteria so that when we bring the proposals back for you, you may have an option for constructing the facility at a lesser amount, which is closer to what we originally budgeted. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That can be done.
So that, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
The motion is to, the motion is to accept staff's recommendation at the, at closer to the two million dollar budgeted amount.
After we vote.
So there's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? If you're here for public hearing, the number's three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. If you're here in person, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address. Is there anyone here for public hearing, or you can use the YouTube chat? Do we have anything in the chat? Seeing nothing in the chat, closed public hearing, phone rang, no, we're closed. Is there any additional conversation from the commission or any discussion at this point, or in discussion?
Question?
Question can call.
Questions called, all the favors say aye? She's quick today.
Yeah.
So we are, it's been a long time to get to this step, but I'm glad we're here. We, we've looked through several options, but I'm encouraged that we are going to move forward at this time.
I want my name on the building.
And so again, thank you, Mr. Griffith. Moving forward to item number nine, emergency adopt resolution twenty twenty R eighty-eight, authorizing the purchase and installation of telecommunications system, audio, video upgrades for city facilities, and accepting proposals from DynaLink Services and Inspire Technology North Florida to purchase this installation for a project, total project cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. At this time, Mr. Holmes, I will turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, I appreciate that. I respectfully request that the, the commission consider taking this item up as an emergency item. If you'd like justification, I'm happy to provide, say.
Yes, sir, can you go ahead and do that?
As the commission is probably aware, there is a limited window within which the city is able to attempt to access the cares funds that have been allocated to the city by the county through the state and federal governments. That window, to cut to the chase, requires that we have the money spent, the product obtained and installed by December one of this year, which, as you know, is approaching rapidly. Due to a number of factors, including the fact that the three million dollars, well, the, the five hundred thousand that we now believe that the city has access to was only allocated to the city in the very recent weeks, a couple of weeks, actually. We've, we've had to scramble to put a, a viable and doable list of, of expenses and products and services together that we believe will be reimbursable in order for us to be able to have any chance of moving forward and, and getting these items purchased and installed. We, we, we basically do not have time to wait for the next commission meeting. So for that reason, I'm asking that this be placed on the agenda as an emergency item. So for that reason, I'm asking that this be placed on the agenda as an emergency item.
I entertain a motion to take this on. Motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Brown.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously.
So with that, if I could, Mr. Mayor, um, staff has been meeting since the day literally that we, well, we've been meeting since the CARES funding was, uh, was in essence approved. You know, there's been a series of stages and I know that many of you have been updated and, and you, you've watched, uh, various accounts of how this process has worked. The county was, uh, a lot allocated about $13 million. Cities of our size were not directly allocated any money by the federal government or the state government, but instead the county was allocated, uh, about 13 million and it was charged with the responsibility of essentially distributing that money. Um, the county first, uh, was, was given $3 million plus or minus by the, actually a little bit plus, by the state and that money is on hand. The difference between the 3 million and the 13 million, uh, they were going to have to seek after it was spent, but it was allocated to them. So the county first adopted a program of trying or attempting to or authorizing the expenditure of that $3 million to individual businesses. At some point, um, it was clear that they weren't going to have individual businesses who qualified and who would, uh, who would have basically take all of that $3 million. And so, a couple of weeks ago, they, uh, uh, allocated $500,000 to the city, provided we could come up with reimbursable expenses, expenses that would qualify and are eligible for reimbursement under the CARES Act. Um, even before that had occurred, our staff, your staff had begun attempting to isolate items and things that we thought were, um, eligible expenses and that would be the most, uh, useful and the most effective for the city as we deal with the effects of the pandemic. So, um, when the, uh, $500,000 was allocated and actually after consulting with some of the county people, some of our own resources and some of our vendors, uh, the staff arrived at what we consider to be a shortlist, a list of, uh, of, uh, I, I think, uh, we'd say most important and critical items, uh, that we believe are reimbursable from the funds that are at issue. Some of those items are, uh, items, uh, like reimbursement for personnel expenses already incurred. Some of those items are reimbursement for personal protective equipment already purchased. Uh, and there are some other items that basically we are seeking reimbursement for that we've already spent. Some of the items we haven't yet spent. Um, but if we're going to have any chance of, of buying these items and, uh, and having them reimbursed by CARES, we have to move now. So the, uh, the two biggest, most significant, most impactful and most necessary items that have not already been spent, that we believe could be eligible and will be eligible under the CARES funding are those items that you see in this resolution. One is a telecommunications system and two is upgrades to the meeting facility so that we can better accommodate attendance, what we might call virtual attendance. I think some of the difficulties you've had tonight, uh, we've had tonight, we've had from the beginning in attempting to receive input from the citizenry on a virtual basis and allowing the citizenry to comment and allowing the citizenry to effectively participate in meetings, uh, have been very apparent tonight. And it's our hope that with the telecommunication system as well as the upgrades to the video audio system in the commission room, we can, we can create a, 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 a virtual environment that allows us to actually be effective. I understand that the governor has indicated that we will go live as of November 1, uh, with all of our meetings, but as the, as those, as the mayor knows and as a city attorney knows, um, under our public meeting law, it is still permissible for one or more members of a board to appear mutually, virtually at a board meeting so long as a quorum of the board is present. In addition, there's no prohibition with the public, uh, attending, uh, and participating in a virtual, by virtual means. And as we move forward with this pandemic, I know that there were 5,500 more cases today in Florida, like 57 more deaths. Um, and I understand there are a lot of optimistic predictions about when we'll be basically out of this, uh, cloud or out from under this cloud. Uh, but again, I think that what we've all come to understand is that what's most known about this pandemic is that it's unknown. It's uncertain. So we believe that this would prepare us to move forward in the future, not for, not just for this, but for future events that might require more virtual attendance. Um, and, uh, so for that reason, we've put together a package. We've, we've dealt with our consultants, we've dealt with our vendors. Uh, we, we've looked at and consulted, uh, the contracts that we could take you back off of in order to, to meet our procurement requirements without having to spend the time of going out for a new bid. And the proposal that's before you is the proposal that staff has recommended. I can, I can go a little bit further and then I'll stop and you can ask specific questions of, of myself or Mr. Spencer.
Stop right there for a second.
No, I'm, I've been briefed on it already and I'm well aware.
So anything else from the commission at this time? Any questions that pertain to what's in place? I think, um, looking at, in lieu of what happened today, it's a prime example of the, of the need and the necessity for what we've got in order to be able to serve the public to minimize opportunities for folks to leave, leave their house to be served, um, in the correct, in the correct manner, considering we have an elderly population. Although, with all those things in place, uh, I think it's very appropriate for us to move forward with these recommendations that you have before us. I know you guys have worked really hard on getting this stuff together so that there's an opportunity for us to at least try to hit that 35 day window that we have left. And so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? We're now on the floor of public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Again, on the chat, the YouTube chat, you got 63290100, extension zero, or you can come forward to the podium at this time. Is there anyone here for public comment? Ms. Robinson, do we have anything on the YouTube chat? Thank you. We're now closed public comment. Further discussion from the commission? Questions, call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And also I want to thank Inspire Technology for, um, saving us with our little, uh, dilemma today as well as, uh, working closely with us to get us out of 1985 and at least into 2010. Uh, so we appreciate you in helping us as we start to try to move forward with some technology upgrades. Next on the agenda is public hearing, uh, ordinance annexing and amending the future land use map for Putnam County Industrial to City of Palaca Commercial Res zoning 146 Comfort Road, Palaca, Florida, from County Industrial Heavy to City, Palaca Neighborhood Commercial District C1A, case PB 20 dash two. The applicant Rural Healthcare Incorporated, first reading. Item A is the annexation ordinance, first reading. B is, is the flume ordinance 20.07 for adoption. And C is rezoning ordinance 20.08, first reading. Item A is the first annexation ordinance. Please read the caption.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, order certain adjacent territory identified as 146 Comfort Road, Palaca, Florida, 32177, part of block 71, Stenwell Suburban Farm, map book two, page 39, official records 1,073, page 659, map sheet 37E, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing for.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Just for the record, we've got Joe Kuymeyer. I guess I'm looking at your name. Who's present for the applicant, um, Mr. Mids, do you have anything else on this? Mr. Mids, or anything else you want to add on this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. For the public hearing, is there anyone?
I've got to do a presentation now. We'll continue, okay? Take care. Let me bring myself in. Yes, I guess it's my turn.
Yeah, it's your turn.
Okay, let me bring up the, uh, PowerPoint. Let me see if I can properly share the spring, this screen with you. Let's see. I've got that. Um, let me, give me just a moment. Share screen. Okay, I go to PowerPoint. All right, can you see my PowerPoint presentation?
Can't see it, but we can hear you.
Oh, um, share the screen. Let me, I may have to get technical assistance in here for a second. Hold on.
It's okay.
Slideshow. Is the slide showing?
Give me, better yet, for the purposes of, or hours apart, give me the, give me the verbal synopsis.
Okay, well, I, I, I will. The verbal synopsis is that we have, um, a present, we have a request for annexation, future land use. Oh, Sunny's to the rescue. Hold on, I thought I had, I thought I hit the sharing screen. Just a moment here.
Moving. Annexation, your own part eight annexation is working. Just go ahead and continue on with your verbal. Never mind, don't listen to me.
Hold on.
I'm loud and clear.
Okay, well, while, while technical is trying to get me, get me up and running, um, I'll just tell you, we have an annexation. It's several acre property. It's, it meets all the annexation criteria. Are they seeing this now?
Mayor, can you see it now?
I see it. I see it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. All right, so, um, it's by Rural Healthcare Inc. It's Aza Health as well. And I'm, I'm, I just want to give a shout out to the applicant, the applicant's agent, Joe Keymeyer. Joe was in on Zoom earlier and I think he's here. He's available for any questions, but he was, uh, a pleasure to work with on this and we got this application together, you know? And it's, it's for annexation, related future land use amendment and related rezoning. And, and the, the reason for this really is that they, they, they're not able to expand under, this is a Comfort Road and Comfort Road. It's in the Crystal Cove area, just, just east of railroad tracks, east of, east of, uh, US 17. Under the county existing land use and zoning, it, it's, this office use is a non-conforming use, so they can't expand it. So the applicant wants to do a 3,000 plus or so square foot expansion and also wants, uh, full city water and sewer. So that's, that's really the short story on it. The, the yellow is, is showing the existing county industrial and industrial heavy zoning and then proposed city commercial and city C1A neighborhood commercial district. That's the least intense commercial district. It was, I think it's a good suggestion. Beats the various annexation requirements, compactness, con, concubality, future land use amendments. It's, it's definitely consistent with the comprehensive plan, does not conflict. I, I pointed out several elements, policies does not conflict with other plan elements. Commercial land use includes offices, of course. And, and again, it's the, it's the, um, it's non-conforming and that's, that's a lot of what's bringing them here. Like to point out that the, the C1A zoning is, I think particularly complimentary to the future RV park approved PUD that you all approved just to the east and to the Crystal Cove Marina Complex, in addition to the Crystal Cove Residential subdivision that's north of the complex. So these are good changes. Public facilities element, can't distribute, you can't do that, they can't get the city water unless they're, you know, annexational, unless they're annexed. Um, future services, you know, reviewed with the public works, then public works director and the fire chief and police chief as well. No issues of city services there. A little bit on the suitability of the land. This property was developed, uh, about 23 years ago with a almost 13,000 square foot office building that was for, then the Florida Furniture went on to Back Automotive. And it's, uh, a key point is that although these are native wetlands there, that's history as far as this site's go. The hot site was almost entirely filled, cleared and filled was added to enable site development. It is of, the applicant is well aware, I'm sure he's certainly, this is from this report, additional development will require modification of the stormwater permits for the property. Here's a nice, nice aerial, nice Google Earth shot.
Maybe with the property.
Yep, there we are. So it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good annexation. Does not, it does not further urban sprawl, meets all those tests. I will not go through the rezoning analysis, the, the, the points that the code requires you look at and they're on the report and they're on this PowerPoint are almost as many points as there are letters in the alphabet. It's a, it's an area of the code that could use a little bit of tightening up, but it's clear to me in, in, in the analysis presented that it's, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's compatible with the neighborhood, meets all the applicable requirements. And, um, I will spare you all those details and I figure that's probably okay with you unless you have any questions about any of them.
It's okay with us. You supplied it to us in your, you supplied it to us in our book. We have it. Um, we've had an opportunity to review it. Is there anything you want to add outside of what you previously supplied to us?
No, just, just recommend by sep, by separate motions, um, the adoption of the, of the ordinances that are before you.
Thank you.
For annexation, that's first reading of two. The next, next reading will be at your next city commission meeting, uh, November 5th. The small scale land use amendment mercifully is only one reading of ordinance and the rezoning is two readings. That's really, that's my presentation. Again, uh, thanks to Joe Keymeyer, he's great to work with and he's available for questions as am I.
All right, thank you. Anything, Mr. Keymeyer?
No, uh, Dean covered it really well and, uh, I look forward to, uh, moving forward with the addition for the, the owner, Aza Health on his property.
All right, and just for the record, uh, Aza Health is a nonprofit organization, so this wouldn't be property that we'd be adding to the tax roll, correct?
That I do not know. I know that they are Rural Health Incorporated and I know they do, I believe, enjoy some, uh, tax exempt status, but they will be paying for utilities, uh, uh, moving forward.
They'll be, they'll be paying, they'll, they'll have city water insured, uh, if, if the city's so inclined, if commission's so inclined, but, um, they have a tax exempt status. And they would pay fire assessment. So, thank you, thank you. Uh, we're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing that relates to annexation ordinance? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? Questions, call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, the future land use amendment ordinance 20.0, 20-07, caption please.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size, from Putnam County Industrial to the City of Palaca Commercial, with following property, 146 Comfort Road, part of block 71, Stenwell Suburban Farms, map book two, page 39, official records 1073, page 659, map sheet 37E, providing for severability and providing for.
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? The numbers 386-329-0100, extension zero, YouTube chat, or you can come forward at this time. Ms. Robinson, is there anything in the chat?
Not at this time.
Seeing nothing in it. We'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question?
Questions, call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, the rezoning ordinance 20-08.
Twenty thousand, an ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County Industrial Heavy, the City of Palaca Neighborhood Commercial District C1A for the following property, 146 Comfort Road, part of block 71, Stenwell Suburban Farms, map book two, page 39, official records 1073, page 659, map sheet 37E, providing for severability and providing.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there a second? Second, my Vice Mayor Brown. Open the floor for public hearing. Some instructions. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Do we have anything in the YouTube chat? Do we have anything in the YouTube chat? Seeing nothing in the chat. We're closing the hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, city manager and administrator reports. For the sake of time, we will go with the city manager, and if there's anything the staff needs to report on, you can chime in.
Mayor, we'll keep it brief. We're moving forward with some staff hires. Fire chief search, the replacement of the planning assistant, and also looking for a code enforcement officer, as well as a planning director. We do have things moving in all those directions. Otherwise, the matters you've covered tonight have been the matters that we've been primarily working on since our last meeting, and we appreciate your attention to them. If you have specific questions about anything, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll keep it brief tonight.
Any questions from the commission?
None.
Okay.
I just want to tell you all, y'all need to look up that green book because more historical stuff is coming up, and it's rules and regulations from Tallahassee.
All right, thank you. Anything else from any of our department heads? Now, so you look like you got something to say. That was a joke. Anybody got anything? I've got something. Mr. Mills, this is your, this is your last meeting with us, and I cut you off on your forty-seven minute presentation.
I tried to keep it short.
I want to tell you that on behalf of City of Palaca and the City Commission, from all of the staff here, we appreciate you and the time that you spent with us in the interim planning directive. We wish you the best of luck in any future endeavors. And we just, again, we thank you for all that you've done here at the City of Palaca. We want to give you a round of applause, just to let you know how much we appreciate it. And so Dean has been officially retired and unretired for, what, about a year here?
Two years ago, retired from Gainesville, I thought. Yeah.
You've been hanging with us for about a year, right?
Yeah, July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, a little over a year.
We appreciate it. You thought you were coming in for a few days, you know, for a year, but we appreciate you, thanks again.
Thank you. It's, it's been a lot of fun. It's, it's, it's really, it's, it's been good, and I really appreciate it, and.
Dean is also the unofficial director of social distancing, so that everyone knows.
I gave out masks. I did everything I could.
Commission comments at this time. Mr. McCaskill. Vice Mayor.
Nope, I'm gonna let you back this time.
Really?
Yep.
Commissioner Campbell.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
No, Vice Mayor, you run out of people to keep coming.
That's okay. I'll come back and comment when I'm gone. The two of us sit like that, elbow each other.
All right, no comments tonight.
I'm last on the list. I got a couple things I want to do. Somebody had a birthday today by the name of Logan Becker, our finance director, who wants to say happy birthday to Ms. Becker. So let's give it back around applause for her birthday.
Aw, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I might say one more.
Go ahead.
I just want to give a shout out to my son. His birthday is today too, so Zach, he's officially twenty-one years old, and I just want to, you know. Thank you for being the young man that he is, and he was raised by great parents. And happy birthday to you too, Logan. Thanks, that's all I have.
Give it up for Zach. Larry Beaton, if you're watching, our prayers are with you, and we hope you get well soon. That's our historian for the City of Palaca. We just want to make sure, Mr. Beaton, that we let you know that you are definitely in our prayers, and we hope that you get better. And so, again, we want to give our prayers to Mr. Beaton. Additionally, I want us to make sure that in our community of citizens as a whole, that we realize that the pandemic in many places across this country has created greater incidences of violent crime, greater incidences of, of, of really tragic events taking place and that people all across are having to adjust behaviors, and in some cases, we're seeing an uptick in crime, things of that nature. Had an opportunity to talk to Chief Shaw. We've had a few murders in this community and some violent crimes in this community, and our heart goes out to all the families who've been affected by these crimes within the community, but also we want to make sure that as a community that we begin to, that we begin to cope together, that we come together, become more cohesive during this time where there's so much uncertainty and so many things that are abnormal. And so there's some psychological incidences that occur. There's some tools out there and some helpful hits that will help you cope. And Chief is going to put together a, he's going to put together a bit of a workshop to kind of help people talk through some of these things, and we're going to assist him in doing a virtual program which will allow us to be able to truly have some tools in our toolbox which will allow us to, to work through the pandemic and through some of these things that are out there. We've got a number of services, a number of service providers that have, that are present within our community who can help as well. And we just want to make sure that we give everyone a virtual, kind of a virtual lesson or virtual exhale so that you all know exactly what's there and how we can better serve our community, how we can protect our citizens, and how we can watch our neighborhoods. So we all want to come together for the purposes of making sure that we stand about violent crime in our community and that we stand about this uptick of the virus as well as violent crime during this time period. So Chief, if you got any part of words on it, we'll close out.
No, sir, Mayor, thank you very much. I think that was very well said.
He's like, so thank you. Good night, is kind of what Chief said. But again, we just appreciate everything that goes on in the work of the Black Police Department as well, but we're just going to continually work forward and move forward in this community. So our prayers are out with everybody. Remember, October is Breast Cancer Month, and we Breast Cancer Awareness Month, continually wear your pink. Make sure we go out and we support the events pertaining to breast cancer awareness as well as domestic violence awareness. And so with that, we are closed. End of motion.